Yes, welcome to the April 15th Exeter Regional Cooperative School Board Meeting. Please join me in saying the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose resolve liberty and justice are.
Thank you. My name is Bill Gothe. I'm the Chair of the Board, and we're going to start by doing introductions. And Timmy, could you kick us off?
I'm Timmy Guntz from Stratum.
Neil Blake in Exeter.
Melissa Lyons, East Kingston.
Dawn Bullens, Exeter.
Erin Garcia de Prades, Stratum.
Amy Ransom, Newfield.
Brian Duffy Brentwood.
Colette Provost, Cooperative Middle Rep.
Lachlan McCauley, Cooperative Middle School Rep.
Great. And the administrators, Drew?
Drew Berstow, Principal at CMS.
Welcome.
Molly O'Keefe, Director of Finance.
Yeah, I was going to go to you first, but yeah. It's up to you.
Hi, I'm Lauren McGrath. I'm the 7th Grade Assistant Principal at the middle school.
Melanie Faulkner, 8th Grade Assistant Principal.
Annie Roach, Special Director of Middle School.
Karen, grade 11 Administrator at the middle school.
I'm Betis Castaneda, from 6th Grade Assistant Principal.
Welcome.
Esther Asbell, Superintendent, right here in SAU 16.
Yes, well, thank you for introducing yourself.
Yeah.
Great. We will start with public input, starting at 6:02. So if you have something to say, we just ask that you come to the mic that's up in the middle of the room, say your name and town, and we'll go from there. But let's start with some, we have some visitors. Dan, is Dan here?
So I have an update on, from Dan, and Dan and Rusty aren't here this evening because they have decided to focus on the courier field, which would be the Exeter Elementary School Board.
Oh, okay.
So it's off the table for the co-op board for now.
All right, meeting adjourned. Let's go. All right, well, sorry, we're sorry, missing Dan. The next one, Colin. Is Colin here?
He's not yet, but he's lovely, too.
Do you want to wait for Colin? Because we can go through student updates, then we can come back. Is that, let's do that. I always love hearing from Colin, so, and I can't wait to hear from you. That's great. All right, so let's, let's move on to Colette and Lachlan. Would you guys update us? What's going on at CMS?
On March 7th, the 7th graders had a spring fling dance. Mr. Burke ran this event to help raise money for the Summer England Field Trip. The theme was neon, and aside from dancing, there was also fun games and concessions. Overall, the dance was very successful and a great fundraiser.
Over the past few months, 8th graders have been in the process of picking their 9th grade classes. In February, teachers made the recommendations on what level of classes each student is suited for. Students could either follow their teacher's recommendations or override them. Before students made their decisions, EHS Counselor Mrs. Newcomb visited the 8th grade team, each 8th grade team, to answer any questions about EHS schedules, et cetera. A few days later, students picked their classes, and the 8th grade counselor sorted out any issues.
For the past three weeks, SST has invited current 8th grade students to tour the building and learn more about the 12 programs they have to offer. Some of these programs include pre-engineering, mechanics, welding, and culinary classes. Each pod went separately, and it was a great opportunity to ask questions and learn more about what SST has to offer.
The CMS Jazz Choir has had many events in the past few weeks. Everyone in the Jazz Choir is going to be singing a solo piece at Jimmy's Jazz and Blues Club in Portsmouth. We've been picking our songs and coaching, and going to coaching sessions to improve our stage presence and vocal skills. This will be the Jazz Choir's concert, since they will be performing multiple group pieces as well. They also went on a field trip to the NHS double A conference on April 10th, where they performed many of their pieces to many student groups and superintendents.
Monday through Wednesday of last week was designated for eye-ready testing. For this testing session, we implemented a new schedule. Similar to a half-day or delayed opening schedule, all students tested for a little over two hours, and then started their day as normal, but with shortened class periods. This was the same school-wide, which helped the day run smoothly and made it so no classes were skipped. This system worked so well that CMS plans to do the same thing when SAS testing starts next week.
Good SAS testing next week. Excellent. Testing, yes. And you didn't get to miss a class. That is awesome. I love the collaboration between SST and what, that is really great that we're in the building so early. So CMS administrators, are you proud of these two? I mean, this is, they come and update us all the time. They do a great job. So we really appreciate, appreciate that. Colette, you have some news that you've shared with me. You want to share it with us? No? Yes? Am I putting you on the spot? You don't have to.
I got into PEA.
Yes, congratulations. Yes. We're very proud of you. That is great. And I see CMS students coming to our building, but also going to others. So we're going to cheer you on. And it's a little bit too early, but we'll be cheering you on from afar. Anybody have anything that they want to ask?
Well, I just wanted to say I attended the NHSAA meeting, and everybody was really talking about the jazz, the middle school jazz choir. They were really, really impressed, and they did a wonderful job. So you did a great job. Thank you for coming.
Great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Carly's not here. Victoria, you mind coming to talk to us? What's going on? Yeah, do you mind just coming to the mic? And then, if you don't mind, just repeating your name?
So, good evening, everyone. I'm Victoria Curly. I'm from the Business Marketing Academy from SST. And today, I just wanted to share my journey in our SST class, since I'm a senior, and how it's impacted my life and future. One of the highlights has been our success at DECA. This year, I won 3rd place for Human Resource Management. Winning there was not just an achievement, it was a testament to our hard work and creativity in this class. Being able to design projects, reflect my own ideas, has been incredibly fulfilling, especially as someone who has a love for cars and many other interests. My teacher really lets us be creative, whatever we want to do. This class has given me the freedom to choose my groups and collaborate with my peers, which has been a valuable experience. I've made many great friends in this class. It's guided me towards my passion for international business and human resources. I signed up for this class seeking real-life experiences, and I can confidently say that I've received so much more than that. I've made friends, met inspiring business owners, and gotten a lot of advice from business owners, especially in the local areas, and gained insights that are paving my way for my future, who make me who I am today. Looking ahead, I'm excited to continue my journey at UNH, and I will pursue international business and human resources. And I'm grateful for everything this class has to offer for me, and where my path will lead me. If you're in CMS right now, I definitely suggest taking an SST class. It really paves that way if you're not sure what you want to do. So, yeah, thank you.
It sounded like it did a great job for you. That is excellent.
Yeah.
And you're going to UNH next year?
Uh, this coming fall.
This coming fall. So congratulations.
Thank you.
That is great.
It's my alma mater, so good choice.
Mine, too. So, yes. Great. Any questions? Thank you for coming and spending some time with us and letting us know what's going on. We don't get to hear this all the time, so it really helps us. And SST has been doing a great job, and thank you for being part of it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Interesting time. Yes. All right, so thank you for all the student reports. We're going to come back. Colin, welcome. I know, I know, yes. I was going to say, do I see you?
Sorry, I was running a moment late. My daughter was presenting at her, at the Oyster River Sustainability Night. Dad made a little tiny home for 4th graders, and so, of course, and if you guys know Durham, that road's all trafficked up, so I was reroute the wrong direction. So I apologize. I've run a little late. Anyways, I want to thank you again for the opportunity, for another chance. I think, if you don't know me, I'm Colin Burke. I'm not sure who's new to the school board this year. Teacher at the middle school, trying to get, or asked permission again for another trip to London. We have seven girls going this year who signed up. Very excited. They're doing a lot of researching and planning. Got a group, has really come together. But before I started, I had invited one of our travelers to come. I'd give her a moment to speak. Ella, if you'd like to come up here.
Talk about her experiences.
Okay. Hi, all. My name is Ella. I'm an 8th grader here at CMS. No, not here. Sorry, I thought I was going to be presenting at CMS. So I'm here tonight to tell you a bit about the upcoming 8th grade trip to London that will be going on in June. So I was interested in going, since my parents had gone, and obviously, they sent pictures of the two of them at amazing sights. And my parents thought it would also be a great opportunity to meet new people, interact with other teachers, learn about culture in other countries, and better understand world history. So when my parents were in 8th grade, they went on a class trip to Washington, DC. While that is also a valuable trip, we are so lucky to have teachers and the school board supportive of us traveling abroad. It opens up to a new, a whole new world of opportunity. And as of the beginning of the school year, our group, our group of students have been doing fundraising and advertising for our trip. Our fundraising efforts have helped raise money for our own trip, but also some of it is going towards a scholarship for next year. One of our fundraisers was collecting gift cards for account, oh my God, for a calendar raffle. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous. We had to go downtown to Exeter and ask for donations, and this helped to build my leadership skills, because I had to ask up the courage, and I had to speak to some store managers and request donations. It boosted my confidence up a bit when people said yes, and so many people were happy to support our trip. We even got to hear some stories about some of their businesses, which is pretty cool. Another fundraising effort we helped was running the 7th grade school dance. We helped plan and coordinate the event, sell items at the dance, and make sure it ran smoothly. This also helped build my leadership skills and gave me a real-life experience in coordinating events. And it also allowed me to be a role model to my younger peers. Running the school dance was something I'll never forget. It was giving joy and excitement to 7th graders, and that really was a great feeling to have, the feeling of giving. Being able to travel to London is such a good experience, and I wish everyone could have it. It offers 8th graders a unique and enriching educational experience that goes far beyond what a local trip within the US can provide. Visiting a global city like London exposes students divide, divide, oh my gosh, device, diverse, diverse, diverse cultures, historical landmarks, and international perspectives, fostering a deeper understanding of the world and their place in it. Walking through centuries-old sites like the Tower of London or the Westminster Abbey brings history to life in a way textbooks cannot. While navigating a new country builds confidence, adaptability, and global awareness. This kind of immerse, immersive learning not only enhances academic growth, but also encourages personal development and curiosity, key traits for future success in the connected world. While local trips can be fun and educational, an international experience in London offers a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to broaden horizons and create lasting memories at a formative age. I really hope that incoming 8th graders of 2026 can have this opportunity as well. And thank you, thank you to Mr. Burke for making all this possible. Our school is lucky to have dedicated teachers who have made this experience possible for our students. While most other teachers will be headed to the beach to enjoy some peace and quiet for the first week of vacation, he has chosen to give us 8th graders this opportunity. So thank you all for supporting our trip, and I hope there's one next year.
Great.
Thank you, Ella. That was awesome. Very kind words there. Right, I hadn't known her before this year, and she's really, Ella's really stepped up as kind of one of our quiet leaders of bringing us together. She was amazing when we were doing some of the fundraising. Just stepped right up and jumped right in there, and when we were downtown, asking for donations. She was probably the most fearless one up there going up, which was awesome to see. So anyways, you guys have received this year's packet, very similar to last year. Very similar trip, no big changes. I did spend some time actually researching through other companies, just to see other options out there, other costs. I know, I forget the gentleman's name who was on the school board last year. I need to mention, you know, I'd just be curious if there were other companies through which to run through. So I did, I contacted two or three other companies, and I got to say, students love travel is by far the best option, I think, out there. The big guy, EF, you end up with up to 40 kids from other schools getting bussed in from outside of the cities. Another smaller company, I think it was called Four Winds, was a day less and would have been about $500 more. So I, I trust Rob. Delores, many of you know Rob. He's, they put together, I think, the best products, especially the best product for the money out there. So I, that's, I, you know, love to stick with them. Ella did mention also our scholarship. We've done a lot this year trying to raise money for scholarships. We had a little bit of money coming over from last year, one fundraiser, that 7th grade dance you mentioned. We've run so far that, so we're up to a little, about $1,700 at this point. We're in the middle of doing that gift card fundraiser, hoping for at least another $500, so there's a scholarship there, and then running one more 6th grade dance, since all the 6th graders saw myself and Ms. Davis running the 7th grade one, and we teach 6th grade, they're all jealous. So we said, we'll do our best to put on another one. So we're hoping for, you know, a nice, successful night there. We're hoping to have somewhere between $3,000 and $3,500 available for scholarships. So one of the things, Mr. Berstow and I were talking, maybe even some input from the school board about how best to use that. Do we put all our eggs in one basket? Use that, you know, a lot for one student? Do we, you know, split it maybe $1,500 between two different students? You know, do we, how much do we save for next year? So I was looking maybe some input from the board for that as well if we decide to move forward. So that's what I have. I don't, you have questions for me? Thoughts?
Great. I have a couple of thoughts. I know the person that said you should look at other ones. That was me.
Okay.
So I totally appreciate the EF, looking at the EF and Four Winds. I do know Rob. So it's just nice to get the perspective. So we're, we're.
Everybody was about the same price within a few, I think EF, if you wanted to do a consolidated trip with other random schools, with about an hour outside of the, 45 minutes or so outside of the city in a hotel, I think it saved about $200, which we're going to stay, if anybody knows London, we found a spot hotel this year. We're staying about a 12-minute walk from Piccadilly Circus and Leicester Square, which you can't, it's like staying right next to Times Square. You can't ask for anything better than that.
That is great. And I heard, I heard some other key things, like the fundraising. I think that's great. That is really helpful, because the cost is high. So if we can get other students to, to do it, that is really great.
And not to interrupt, another reason we want to start now is so that gives a full year to plan. You know, if a student is motivated even at 13, 14 years old, mow some lawns in the summer, babysit, they can easily come up with half of that cost over the course of a year. And between them and a, you know, split with the family, it's much more, especially with the summer being available to work, was one of our thoughts, to start now.
Yes. Yeah, I think that, no, that is great. And I appreciate you coming so early in front of the board, too. Any, any questions or observations?
When you're raising funds and people give donations, do they write the check to Exeter High School?
Well, it would be to the Cooperative Middle School.
Or Cooperative, sorry.
Yes. So, okay, our two biggest fundraisers so far have been, well, the biggest one so far has been the, the dance. But yes, when they do the gift card, they, all the checks, all that go to Cooperative Middle School. I write that direct to, I drop that off with Ms. Grady. She keeps all the funds going.
And is that a tax deduction? Like, if someone gives a donation, is it deductible? And maybe, you know, I don't, I'm asking because I don't know the answer to that. And I wondered if it were, if it would generate more donations.
Hmm. That I don't know.
Anyway, just.
Yeah, that'd be something to look into. Yeah, I'd have to, I, I don't know if we'd be considered, would you have to be a 503(c) charity for that? Yeah.
You have to establish a fund as a nonprofit.
Yeah. So I would, I would assume no, but that'd be interesting to look in. Yeah.
My oldest son went on one of the, the students love travel trips, and they're fabulous. And you're right, it's a great value.
That's why a lot of, like, the sports team that have Friends of Soccer or whatever, they have a separate organization. That's the 501(c)(3). They have a separate fund to make a tax.
I'm, I'm the friend of the London trip, so it's. But we do, actually, I've had some very supportive parents who have helped out. Actually, when we ran the 7th grade dance, Ava Chikanezi's father was, helped, she, the father, I'm sorry, he helped to DJ it. He does some DJing on the side, so he came by and helped us out with that. So we've had, we've had some amazing support from all of the parents, though.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Any, any suggestions on what to do with the funds, like how to distribute them? Because that's a question you asked, like.
Yeah, I was, I was leaning, if we can make it over 3,000.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'll talk with Drew in depth about it, but I was leaning towards two smaller ones. We'll talk, we'll talk more about the application process and all that if we, but.
Yeah, perfect. So you'd like, you'd like to get this approved, so I just ask the board, all those in favor of approving the trip, please raise your hand. Okay, everyone's approved?
All right, thank you very much. And I do apologize for coming in right.
Yeah, it was perfect timing.
But I'd love it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Colin. So with that, if, if students want to go home and leave, if you're, we're starting to get to the exciting part of the meeting, the minutes. You stick around, you'll see policy, too.
See ya.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So moving on, let's take this, so for the board, we're the public meeting. Minutes were distributed last Tuesday. Anybody have any questions about the minutes or corrections?
I am 99% certain that Avery is spelled A-V-R-Y for the robotics student, because I know his father.
Oh, you do?
We had a conversation about his name once years ago.
And you have a good memory, so I trust that you're.
Brian, where is that? Where is it in the?
Page 2 of the minutes, section 7, 7.2.
A-V-R-Y, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other changes, I would move to approve the minutes with that editorial change.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. We have a second? All right, thank you, Brian. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, everyone is approved. Moving on to the next ones are the non-public minutes. Could I look for a motion to approve the non-public minutes?
Motion.
Thank you, Dawn. Second. Thank you, Erin. All those in favor, please raise their hand, say hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you. We're all approved for that. All right, so it is 6:22. We've gone 20 minutes?
20 minutes, yep.
20 minutes. So we're, we're going to close. Anybody have any public input? I'm going to close the public input for tonight. Oh, it's 30. I'm sorry. Okay, we'll keep it open. All right, so I'll turn it over to Drew.
All right. We have a little presentation back here, so we'll be facing this way if anybody wants to. Oh, thanks, Sonya. All right, so we wanted to take this opportunity, we wanted to take this opportunity to share just like a sort of state of the school report, particularly for some of the school board members that haven't necessarily been here for the last little bit, just to give you a sense of where we are in our school, what we're working on this year, and what we're looking to work on next year. So, Sonya, do you mind advancing? Thank you. All right, so three years ago, when our team was first assembled at CMS, we engaged in a book study that called, the, the book was called The Successful Middle School, this, we believe. It's kind of like the, the standard, the gold standard for middle school best practices. And so we used, went through a self-assessment. We used actually AMLI, the Association for Middle Level Education. And they, basically, we did a study of our school. We collected stakeholder input, and we identified four major priorities that we needed to work on, as sort of told by all the stakeholders, community members, families, students, staff. And those four priority areas are right up there. Social, emotional, learning, differentiation, and universal design, teaming, and our master schedule. So as we were working through those priorities, MTSS is a multi-tier system of support. This is the structure that we use to embed and work on those four priorities. It's a way to, for us to organize our school, all the supports that we're putting in place. It creates a vernacular and skeleton that we can sort of hang things on. So MTSS is divided into A and B. MTSSA is academics, MTSSB is behavior. And there are, the way we have it here, three tiers of support. Tier one is like a universal support, so all students have access to universal supports in both academic and behavior. Tier two is a little bit tighter. Those are, tier two is designed for kids who might need short durations of support, and then can sort of be released. And then tier three is a little bit longer, are students that require the sort of longer duration of support, maybe a little bit more in-depth and significantly more targeted. So this is 2022, our first year. You can see just visually, I'm not looking to go through every single thing on there, but I just want you to see visually the way things looked in 2022. The next year, we added a few more supports in each of the tiers, on each of the sides. And then last 20, 24, 25, you can see sort of how we've been adding on over time to create that network of support for our kids on both sides. So Ms. Burke is going to give us a little update on the academic side for this year and next year.
All right. So one of the major things that we've been working on in our building and providing support for our teachers and staff is around PLCs, and those are professional learning communities. And the big thing about the PLC is it gives our, it gives our teachers and staff time to collaborate and, and to really talk about student learning. We are able to provide PLCs to our teachers and staff two times a week in their content-alike PLCs. So that would be like all of the ELA teachers in six. PLCs, so that would be like all of the ELA teachers in sixth grade. And then we also give two times a week for student-alike PLCs, so that would be like Team Six, um, and they all get to meet together. So, as we're working through PLCs, um, there's three big ideas that we focus on, and, um, the first is really that focus on student learning, so not just what we teach, but are students learning, um, what we're teaching. Um, looking at collaborative culture and collective responsibility, and that's that differentiation, um, we're really looking to think about all of the students are our students, and how can we help all of them to learn? And then that third piece is that results orientation, so, after we've done our teaching and had our PLCs, um, looking at data to see how are students doing, and, and focusing on, um, what we might need to continue doing, and what we might need to change based on the results. Uh, and then below, the four questions of a PLC, so that's really that, uh, what drives the PLC, so as student, uh, as teachers are working together, they're constantly thinking about these four questions, um, as they're planning units, as they're thinking about how they might design their assessments, and then also how they might design their differentiation, so that all students in the classroom, um, can, you know, access the learning, and, uh, thinking about the possible barriers to learning, and then also possible ways to extend learning. So, in late, we had asked some of our PLCs to share just some testimonials of why this PLC time is so valuable to them, and so we have a short video to start. Hold on, pause that. This is our STEAM team, by the way, and they did a, uh, very nice little video for us, so hopefully can get the volume to work.
That's gonna be best. Are you ready to start it, Karen?
Ready to start, yeah. Go for it.
Hi, my name's Kate Shulton.
I'm Jessica Custerano Wheeler.
And I'm Lisa Nash, we are the STEAM team from Cooperative Middle School.
Our PLC time is essential for fostering collaboration and innovation in our STEAM program. We use this time to develop and refine our curriculum, ensuring students receive high-quality instruction while staying ahead of emerging technologies, from 3D printing advancements to regenerative medicine in bioengineering. We also explore new and evolving fields such as artificial intelligence, robotics, and laser technology, equipping us with the knowledge to bring cutting-edge concepts into our classrooms.
Beyond curriculum development, our PLC meetings allow us to plan impactful community events like our STEAM Night Expo, which recently brought together nearly 300 community members. These events give students opportunities to showcase their learning and connect with real-world STEAM applications.
Additionally, our PLC time supports vertical alignment, ensuring consistency across grade levels. Through collaborative inquiry, we continuously assess and enhance our teaching strategies while integrating the latest technological advancements, strengthening student success and community engagement in STEAM education.
So I think they said it best, definitely better than I did, right? We do, I will have, um, Sonya flip through, a lot of our PLCs sent feedback, so I, um, just kind of highlighted a few things. Um, something that stood out here was, you know, they collaborate and things get better and better. Uh, this PLC also mentioned how when they can discuss the science concepts, um, it helps them to understand it in a deeper way, so that allows them to, um, explain it and break it down better for students. Uh, this PLC mentioned that it's really helping them to do what is best for all students. Uh, here, they talk a lot about common assessments and designing those common assessments. This is a valuable space for collaboration. This PLC mentioned the shared purpose, and it really creates a more cohesive and supportive learning environment for students. So, again, we're spending a lot of time doing professional learning around the PLC and helping, um, our PLC teams to become stronger and more collaborative, because we really feel like that's going to strengthen our MTSSA, that academic side, um, by allowing that time for teachers to connect.
All right, next up for, um, a little view of where we were, where we are this year, and what we're looking for, for next year, um, this is a chart, crazy chart, of the CMS grade scale equivalencies in 2022. So we were using multiple grade scales in different places in our building, one for classes that got EHS credit, some were 100-point scale, some were a letter grade that have 100-point scale equivalencies, it was very confusing for, um, a lot of people. So, over time, we are looking to shift to something new.
And I'm back. I'm back, everyone. Uh, so we've already made some changes from that chart that Drew just referenced, um, to shift our improvement, um, in reporting out, uh, under competency-based education. So we have made the shift at the middle school to reporting out on competencies for each of our courses. So students get an overall grade, but they also get a grade on any competency that's been assessed, um, for that trimester or quarter. So for next year, uh, what we're looking to do, and what we're, um, the shifts that we're making for next year, is taking our five-level grading scale, which I'll show on the next slide, down to four. Um, we're gonna shift the labels of the grading scale so that it is continuous K through 12, so that we align with the elementary, um, middle, and high school rubrics. Uh, we are going to, we were 100% summative, I'm not sure how or when that was brought in, but we were 100% summative, and now we're making the shift to 20% formative, um, and then 80% summative, and that aligns with EHS. So that will have, uh, those formative grades that students are getting along the way have some weight in their overall grade. And then the habits of learning will continue to be reported out separately from, um, the academics, so those are like our learning practices and learning behaviors that we report out on. So this is just, again, um, a visual of, the top is the current, uh, we have that five, um, uh, level grading scale. Uh, we were removing the AC, and then in more conversations with Jill Lysier, who is the, um, SAU curriculum director, um, we're projecting that we will put in the four levels that are on the bottom and change those titles, and the reason for that, again, is that that's, um, aligned with what is being used at the elementary, the developing proficient extended learning, and then also how the rubrics are being broken out at the high school uses that same language, so we're really putting that language in so that we can be more consistent K through 12. And for the report cards, um, they will still look very similar, um, students will have a letter for every competency that was scored that, um, trimester or quarter, and then they'll have an overall class grade. They will not have any percentages, um, it'll just be those letters on the report card, and that's just, again, reflecting, um, their performance around the competencies that have been assessed, and the homework and class participation, behavior, things like that, um, would not be calculated into an academic grade that would be reported out separately under habits of learning.
Let's do it, please.
Okay, all right.
All right, I'm gonna make a little transition, give the mic to Mr. Perez.
Does anybody have questions before we transition?
Yeah, can we, Drew, can we pause at the grading part here, just if you have a question on that? Because just to, so the board is aware, there's policy IKA, which, when there's a grading system change, the board has to approve that. So if you have questions, I think the hope is that the board will approve that this evening so they can continue to move forward with planning. If we need to have them come back, because you have more questions, we can certainly do that, um, so that's part of the reason they're doing that grading presentation to this board. That policy does require that you approve any changes, and they're changing really from a five to a four, and to align, as you heard, with that pre-K through 12 system, particularly with the 80/20 at the high school, and, um, some other things that were mentioned, so.
So when you, when, when, when I'm, when I'm a student now, or parent, and I look at a report card next year, what will it look like, what will I see? Will it say B beginning, D?
Do you want me to? Oh, go back to it. Uh, yeah, so this year, what is on the report card?
I, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, it's like an M meets, as, um, E exceeds, so, yes, the, the, the titles or headings at the bottom would now be what you would see versus meets M, uh, exceeds E. So it would be the language, um, that would change there. Um, and again, that came from, that's what's being used at the elementary, and it's also being used on the high school rubrics, and so we just, we really wanted that to be consistent K through 12.
So if I, if I have a proficient, will I see like, you said there's no percentages, there's no like 80%, 85, it'll just be P?
Just P. And that's how it is right now, except for it just says M, or it just says meets.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if I may-
Yeah, Joe, you have a please.
Seeing some of the, um, the language being used here, I can understand consolidating the, the tiers, uh, my question is whether it represents any kind of a shift in sort of the, um, pedagogical approach around content versus competency, um, and what percentage of this, uh, evaluation and metrics is based around skill competency in the classroom versus, uh, subject content and mastery? And if those are, you know what I mean, is there some shift that's going in that direction?
Yeah, so, uh, each of the competencies has performance indicators associated with it, and the, um, the PLCs and the departments have been working on identifying, like, what are the essentials, um, for each of those competencies? And then they are working together on, uh, creating rubrics that are more specific, so like, that's more general, or that's more general, more specific to that performance indicator. And so it gives more specific language about, like, what the student would need to demonstrate to meet that specific indicator, um, let's say, under geometry and measurement. And the PLCs work together to, um, discuss how they're going to assess that competency, develop, um, assessments, and what would a student need to be demonstrating to show that they're proficient in that more specific indicator? And then even from there, there's daily learning targets that are also broken out, um, for students and, um, for skills and, and content.
If I can just give the board, maybe isn't as familiar with competency-based education indicators and some of that, as you speak, if we think of, um, driving a car, so if we use that scale, we know when we learn to drive a car, we learn, we have to adjust the mirrors, we have to understand the brakes, we have to know what the ignition is, we have to know the accelerator, we have to know how to turn, we have to know to put our blinkers on, we have to know all of those things, which are individual performance indicators. So if I've learned half of those things, I might be developing, I'm not proficient in the competency of driving a car. I've gained some skills, I can turn it on, I know how to adjust my mirrors, I know how to stop, but I'm not sure how to back up. So, I'm not proficient yet, but I am developing. So that's the, kind of, the idea of, when she says performance indicators, those are like those individual skills broken out to meet the overarching competency.
And I appreciate it, it's sort of benchmark-related, and, and those other sorts of things, I guess my question was more along the lines of, as, if we look at a geometry class, Caesar example, um, what portion of the competencies are learning habit, learning skill versus specific to the content of the subject matter? And I know that that may differ from PLC and from, and from subject area to subject area, but it's one of the things that, that I've been hearing from parents, is the curiosity around, um, what that balance is between learning how to learn and what we are actually learning? Because I know that middle school is certainly the, uh, the laboratory where a lot of that is, the rubber is hitting the road around that, and I was just curious what the philosophy, and I know it's competency-based, but there are learning hat, learning skill competencies, and then there are the competencies around the actual subject matter as well. And I was curious about what that mix looks like, and whether we're seeing a shift in any way among, along the spectrum of that mix.
Well, one, one example I have is like, they, there's, um, so there might be specific skills that students are learning, and that can be applied across content, like in science, for example, they may learn lab skills, and they can apply that when they're doing, you know, different types of labs across the different content in science. So I think it's, I think it's both, I think there, there's really a focus on, and a lot of times we'll be talking about, like, what are the skills, um, concepts, mindsets, knowledge that kids need to be able to be competent? So we're, we're not just looking at one thing, a lot of times it's both and.
Right, and I, I wonder if I'm understanding your question correctly. So if I, I took the subject of math, there are content skills I need, addition, subtraction, division, multiplication, those are still part of those indicators that kids have to learn, and show what they know around that content area. A student that may struggle learning fractions, and they persevere, and they hang in, and they, then, then they also, would also use that process to, for a work-study habit to say, yes, their perseverance was strong on that, in that particular soft skill, if you will, area, and then separate is the content area, do they, do they understand fractions?
Right.
So the math would be about, do they understand fractions? The work-study habits, habits would be about the perseverance. They are separate, so when you see a content grade in math, it's about the math, it's about the content.
And I think, and I appreciate that breakdown, Esther, because I think that the, there's not always a lot of clarity around what, what the differentiation is there, when we talk about competency-based, it is competency within the curriculum, not specifically competency within the work habits piece.
Correct.
And because, and don't get me wrong, I'm all in on the, the competency-based, you know, metric approach and the work habits piece, but I think some, uh, sort of rudimentary clarity around what that means, that when we talk about these, these are academic grades, uh, and they are related to departmental, you know, that sort of thing, versus the, um, you know, knowing how to study and knowing how to prepare and those sorts of things, which are also important, but are not the entirety of the curriculum, because I think there's a misapprehension sometimes, that that's what's happened, and I, I don't believe it, I just want the opportunity for you to explain that that's what's-
Yeah, so those are reported out separately, the learning practices and learning behaviors.
Yeah, just a, a preview, that's, um, defining, or redefining, the, uh, work-study practices, habits of learning, is a project we're gonna be starting next year. Um, so we'll be working on that, probably reporting out about this time next year, giving you a little bit more clarity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think-
Yeah, I think we have a couple more questions, so if you don't mind.
Are the classes at eighth graders' take that are EHS crediting classes, how are those being reported out on the report cards?
Uh, we use the EHS grade scale, yeah.
Any other questions? All right.
All right.
This might tell you some of the questions. So, um, Blue Hawk 101 is our attempt to help students grow, uh, in their executive functioning as they come to sixth grade. Sixth grade has this Blue Hawk 101 run every day for students, and this is our phenomenal product, Carter Dow, he's gonna give you some information on how he's experienced Blue Hawk 101. Go ahead.
As Mr. Perez said, my name is Carter Dow, thank you for letting me present to you today. Blue Hawk 101 is a special class made just for sixth graders. It helps improve many important skills, such as social skills and organizational skills. It also provides orientation for sixth graders in their years of middle and even high school. Blue Hawk 101 is once a day for about 45 minutes, students work with their core teachers and one-on-core teacher. For the first six weeks, students went to the auditorium on Wednesday and met with teachers, such as the nurses, librarians, and school counselor, and also met with special guests. Blue Hawk 101 helps teach the foundation of students' habits of learning. Students also got to take part in five-day-long rotations with their core teachers and one-on-core teacher. The first rotation was focused on self-directed learning. Then, there was a rotation based on communication. Next, we had a rotation based on creativity. Finally, we had a rotation based on collaboration. Here are some examples of some projects I did in Blue Hawk 101. In the first rotation, self-directed learning, with my STEAM teacher, Mrs. Shulton, we were tasked with creating an ornament or a keychain by designing and laser cutting. Um, and I have that to share with you. For the communication rotation, also with my STEAM teacher, we got to work in groups and played challenging color-cou puzzles. Color-cou is bas- Color coup is basically Sudoku but with colors. And then for the collaboration rotation, with my science teacher, Mr. Powley, we were tasked with creating a bird migration game in groups and then got to playtest other people's migration games. The skills I learned in Blue Hawk 101 will help me in seventh grade and beyond. The organizational skills will be used to organize school supplies and my locker. Skills that focus on teamwork will be useful in group projects in the future. Leadership skills will also help in a group and classroom setting. Self-directed learning will help during projects and assignments that are to complete, to be completed silently and will also help during testing periods. I like Blue Hawk 101 because it has presented many topics that I did not learn in elementary school that are vital to learn in sixth grade, such as organizing your notebook, your locker, and your Google Drive. Having this class helped make the transition to the size and responsibility of sixth grade a little easier. Thank you for taking the time to let me talk about this program and I hope that it continues in the future.
Carter, did you say you're a sixth grader?
Yes, I am.
Oh, my goodness, well, if I were your teacher, you'd get an EL on that. That was wonderful.
Which town is he from? He could probably take one of these.
Oh, is that, oh, is that what it is? I see, okay. Joe, you're doing good work over there.
Well done.
Yeah, well done, Carter.
He can have his chair.
I really, I mean, beyond, you did a great job presenting and I really seriously, you would get an EL. But I just, I love the examples, it really brings it home for us. So I appreciate you showing up and showing that with us.
So is Blue Hawk 101 new or has it been, and is this a way to kind of help kids transition into the sixth grade into the middle school by providing additional support for them when they arrive that you thought wasn't there before? Is that the idea?
I think the idea was, what I had been doing was going from school to school to school for helping with transition to CMS. What we found was from each elementary school, they were all different in their executive functioning and their purpose behind it, right? So we wanted to create something that was uniformed so that every student could walk into and feel like there was something significant that was going to help them bolster or step into CMS. So it was developed the summer before this particular year. And we had four staff members that were from each team. We had two interventionists as well as a STEAM teacher help us develop this curriculum.
And so far, are you pleased with what you, the results so far?
Did you just hear him? I think he's our showboat right here. This is, this is explanation of what we've done and why we've done it.
He's definitely exceptional.
Absolutely.
Also, if you're looking at some points of data, I just was talking with Clyde the other day and part of the transition work that they've improved also is going to the elementary schools more often, even meeting fourth graders this year. I know people have gone from the middle school on a regular basis to try and help students reduce that anxiety and parents with that transition. And I believe it was about three years ago during that transition, we lost almost 60 students between fifth and sixth and this year it's 19.
Oh, wow.
So, good job, everyone.
Yeah, that's a big deal, thank you guys.
All right, next up, I think, did one get skipped or did I forget to delete that slide? All right, you can skip, go one more. All right. Next up is our MTSSB section. So in the transition from last year to this year, if you remember at the beginning, let me back up. If you remember at the beginning of this presentation, SEL and bullying was one of our priority areas to address in our school. So in MTSSB, behavior is the key place to be able to address social-emotional learning as that's, you know, people's ability to feel like they belong in school is oftentimes a motivating thing for behavior. So Steph Fregon, who was a leadership studies teacher in our school, we transitioned her over to some leadership studies now, but now she is our community coach, shall we say. And so she's here to share a little bit about what she's doing to bolster our school community in hopes of improving our MTSSB.
Okay, I don't really know where to stand. So hi, I'm Steph Fregon. I've been with Corporate of Middle School for 16 years now. It's been a journey from challenge course and experiential ed director through leadership studies and now community development coach. So my background is in adventure education and facilitation of organizational and team development. So when Drew said a year ago, how would you like to try your hand here at CMS? I said, sounds like an adventure. And it has been this year. We've been doing a lot of very diverse work, looking really at year one with this role as kind of an exploratory year, really trying to kind of dig into the community, assess needs, get out there with students, with staff, and really look at what are the greatest areas of need and where can I be really most useful? So some of the things I've been working through, really looking at it through that tier one, tier two, and tier three systems of support. Coaching students, working with them to build and maintain strong and healthy relationships at all three levels. So tier one is kind of what all students get, doing work in the classrooms, developing community norms, really thinking about what their personal individual role is in their own success, but also in their classrooms and on their teams. Tier two interventions, looking more like working with smaller groups of students, working with classrooms where things might be a little off track, really partnering with those students, with that teacher to kind of get things back on track through revisiting norms, coaching, and personal responsibility. And then tier three is more when things go really sideways, when we have incidents of conflict, either between students, between students and staff, and then every once in a while with staff. So that kind of moves us into the second bullet there is working to strengthen our adult teams at CMS. When our adult teams are functioning well, we find that the students ultimately benefit. I've been doing a lot of work with PLCs, core academic teams, so think like team one, team two, team three, working with IEP teams to really keep students at the center of our conversations and think about how can we, as a diverse group of sometimes parents, sometimes case managers, classroom teachers, how can we really wrap around that student and support them and ultimately meeting their goals? And really working with departments on their goals for moving forward and visioning what they want for their department and how they want to live out that vision. Been doing a lot of work leading specific repair circles, so think conflict resolution and mediation. A lot of that work with students. Some of it, the students come to me and say, hey, we would like to sort something out, would like some guidance in doing that. And sometimes it's referred to me through an administrator, a counselor, or a classroom teacher, saying, hey, we've got something going on, we could really use some support. We've been doing a lot of work with the Support and Accountability Committee. That's been going on for a little over, what, a little over a year? Yeah? Okay, feels like yesterday we started. We've had a strong group of staff members from across the building, representing all content areas, to really take a look at how we do discipline. Really trying to shift from a strictly punitive way of looking at discipline to bringing in more restorative practices, trying to be more proactive in setting students up for success. Think making it easier to do the right thing and harder to do the wrong thing. And then responding in a truly educative way when things don't work out the way we'd like them to. Sometimes that does mean consequences too, but we're trying to sort of build in and kind of backfill with more education and skill building to help students be more successful in the classroom and in their communities. We've been working with staff focusing, starting last year around February, to identify core values. What are the core values that we feel strongly about at CMS? And then how do we develop language around that and really implement that in our classroom teaching and in, just in our work on a day-to-day basis, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, and really helping students understand explicitly what those values look like where the rubber meets the road. Been doing a lot of coaching with staff, a lot of one-on-one coaching, staff members coming in and saying, I'd like to get better at. Sometimes it's, I need better language in the classroom for redirecting students. I need a script for working with a colleague that I really struggle with. I can't unfortunately bring a lot of testimonials because a lot of what we do is really private and really involves people being fairly vulnerable and kind of showing up and saying, I'd like to do better. So we've been doing a lot of that. Our other big project was developing and delivering a feedback survey for these fine folks here. So Mariam Levy, who is not here with us tonight, and I met with her administrators and really asked them, what would you like to learn about how you're doing? What feedback would you like to learn and grow? So we took their feedback, built out a survey to help assess that from staff, and then gave staff an opportunity to really engage in a meaningful, authentic way of speaking to their administrators about very specific things that they wanted to learn about. And we're still working through that, we're still processing that. Every couple of weeks we meet and kind of talk that through and we've been identifying priorities and, I don't know. I've been really honored to work with you all. You're doing a great job. It's, it's been incredible. Last but not least, I'm still teaching a class at Leadership Studies, just to kind of keep, keep my hands in the teaching, the teaching world and getting kids out on the challenge course and staying connected with those roots. So, thank you. That's, do you want me to talk about what's coming next or do you want me to wait? Yeah, one more slide. So I'll just keep the mic. So what's happening next year? One of the things, my truth is looking at that giant list, is it's time to narrow it down. Now that we kind of know what's feeling really useful, really meaningful, next year we're looking ahead towards developing more capacity with our staff members. So my hope is to be using my role next year to identify a smaller cohort of teachers that we can then really focus intensively, doing a lot of coaching, a lot of co-teaching, a lot of partnering to develop their capacity to implement some of these restorative practices so that I can start to hand some of these things back into our community and we can develop a model where those folks can then work to coach a new cohort the following year. So we're hoping to kind of spread the love and make this more of a building-wide initiative and not just a I'm holding all of it experience. So that's what we're looking forward to. So, thank you.
And then as part of Esther's parting work, we're working on enhancing our advisory and then working on pinpointing our tier two and tier three interventions too. And I like the way you said it, when things go sideways. So big picture, steps and big next steps and takeaways. This is for both A and B, just bringing it all home. We're going to continue to build on our existing supports, like that slide that I showed you for our three tiers of support. Strengthen differentiation and instructional strategies through the PLC process. Enhance behavioral supports in tier one, two, and three. And then just continue to work on our ability to collaborate within our school with all of the faculty members that we're with, and students for that matter. I think that's the last slide. Any more questions?
So, anybody have some questions, like get some comments?
Mrs. Fregon, so it seemed, I mean, this is an admirable task and, but it seems pretty daunting. It seems like a big one. And so Drew talked about having a best practice, having a book group, you know, that's their guidepost, this is, you know, the gold standard. But what it seems to me, what you're doing is innovative, cutting-edge also. But there aren't, consider what's going on with students and culture and community. It seems kind of, you have to be an innovator. Is that the right way to think about it? You have to kind of, so do you have, how do you approach that? Is it just, you reach out to others and you have a team building? I mean, how do you, how do you work through that?
It's a great question. So how do I work through that? Last night I was actually teaching, I teach at UNH as well, in evening class. And one of the things that came out of that was this kind of work, working with team development is a deeply creative practice. It's really, you can come in with all the plans in the world and then when you get in a room with a group and kind of see what's actually going on and start to peel back those layers, sometimes it's a matter of saying, oh, the wrong people are actually in the room right now, we need to pause. Like, you know, you all need to go, we need these poor people and I need to talk to you all individually first. And so sometimes it really is a very responsive practice. And it's a matter of just kind of assessing as you go, thinking on your feet and really truly collaborating with people to kind of explore, what do you want? How do you see yourself? How do you see your department? Where do you want to go? What can we do to get there? So I would say innovative is a really good way to look at it. I find that the background in adventure ed has really supported me in that. So it's, you know, you make your plan, you come in, and then you see what's what and you kind of go from there.
So it's very iterative?
Yes.
And the other question, it seems to me some of what you're going to do is be, you'll have to in some way engage our parents and guardians, right, in terms of culture. What are your thoughts on that? That seems like another, you know, really impressive challenge.
It is. That's one of the things I feel like we've been kind of grappling with and talking about is what are the ways to engage families in this process? Some of what we've done, we've had a couple instances this year already where we've had certain students who just needed a little bit of, think refocusing, some goal setting. And so we actually asked the student, we want to work with you to help you show up and be your best self. Who's on your team? Who should be in the room? And sometimes that does mean a case manager comes in, a guidance counselor comes in. You know, I'd like my science teacher to be in the room and I want my mom and dad. And so we've engaged parents that way and sort of explored that a little bit. I've done some work facilitating IEP team meetings and really trying to partner with families and partner with teachers and really try to bring folks a little closer together at that table. But we're starting to look to, when we do repair circles, how are we engaging parents and saying, this is something we'd like to do with your students? Are you okay with us speaking with them? So for example, if a student was doing an in-school suspension, part of their day would be sitting with me and really processing, what happened? How did we get here? But a parent would have been engaged prior to that conversation happening. So I know we're looking ahead, Drew. We've been kind of talking about developing kind of a vision of what are restorative practices and what do they look like here at CMS? So we're hoping to be able to share that sort of information out in the coming year.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Neil, and I want to actually go back to the first question that you asked, Steph, which was the task that she's got ahead of her. And it is quite a task, looking at it. And I have to sort of stand on a separate box and say, I've known Steph for 25 years. And we are so enormously, enormously fortunate as a district to have somebody of her talent and background to be able to take on a task of this magnitude. She's been doing group facilitation and individual reflection and growth and leadership development since she was a teenager. And, which was what, three, four years ago, right?
I like this guy.
I bet there might be three districts in New Hampshire that have somebody of her caliber and experience and capacity with working on this sort of thing. And so I just, I look at that list and yeah, it's daunting as heck, but we've got the right cat at the wheel to help us get it done. So I, I just think that we ought to appreciate that. I know, Larry, I'm sure you do, Drew. But it's, it's something that we really have in our corner that's very unique. You can't say very, it is unique to us to be able to do this.
I think in turn, there's an opportunity here to thank this board and past members because as you remember, we went through budgets two years ago and when Drew moved into the position, et cetera, we really talked about repurposing instead of cutting positions. And so you've heard how some of that repurposing with Blue Hawk 101, with Stephanie's position, et cetera, have been now put in play for a couple of years and you're beginning to see the fruits of that labor. And so I want to thank the board that also supported not cutting but repurposing to some visionary, very innovative ideas that I would venture to say there isn't a middle school in the state that has this kind of opportunities for kids and this learning for our adults to grow and be what I predict to be the best middle school within the next five years. There's no doubt in my mind, if this continues and it's going to, because look at the team.
Exactly.
Thank you.
That's recorded too.
If I could say one thing, I think one of the things I'm really happy about is that we're not just teaching students, but we're raising citizens. And I don't know that we talk about that enough. We have citizens coming out of CMS and that I'm really proud to be, proud to be part of this program.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys, thank you. Great presentation. I know that my kids went through the middle school and enjoyed all of you and certainly, it's a much different school than it was three, four years ago, no doubt. And it's a testament to say that students are moving from the elementary school to CMS with, you know, with some caution but also with some pride versus saying, oh, we don't want to go there. So I commend all you guys, it's great, great work. And this is, this is great.
Bill, I would be remiss in not recognizing Ms. Melanie Faulkner. If you could stand into the light a little bit. She earned, as I sent out, that A-plus administrator award from the New England League of Middle Schools. So here's another. So here's another, the team is elite, and that's another great example of how the recognition that, and the work that these folks do. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
All right, so that wraps up that portion. We're good?
Yeah, except I would look, I would look for some guidance from the board as to whether to move forward and approve that new grading scale from the five letters to the four letters with that consistency pre-K through 12, or if you would like folks to come back, because you have more questions next month. I would recommend you approve it, knowing the full system and that the changes, about four years ago, there was 12 different grading systems at the cooperative middle school. And those of you that had kids there, no, I'm not exaggerating. And so refining this down to a system that also is our parents, our elementary parents are familiar with, and our high school rubrics. And remember, that's not saying that high school's not going to have letter grades. I don't want people to think that, that might watch this. What we're saying is the rubrics that are used, that kids get feedback on, is the same, those four same words and scale. So that will also be some familiarity as kids move through our system, pre-K through 12.
So I just, so in the elementary schools right now, when the parent gets the report card, it is using those?
It's a three-scale, just because that's more age-appropriate, but it's the same proficient. I forget which one they cut out.
Developing proficient extended learning.
Yeah.
Okay. And then for the high school, you say it's the same, but it's
It's the same for the rubrics. So rubrics on projects, et cetera, is the same. They still give the letter grades A, B, C, D, and F, as if you're familiar, because we have the weighted grade system, and there's a whole bunch of other things connected to that grading system, which is much more complicated because of all the high stakes, things that go with letter grades in high school.
Board, how are you feeling? What questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a second? Any other comments?
I like the consistency, so that the kids can, and the parents, to what's happening as they go through the whole system.
All right, I'd like to take a roll call, just to make sure we got everything. Brian?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Nice work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're going to go through
Y'all can go. You don't need to stay.
But there's policy coming up. Policy, please stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want me to move along in the agenda?
Yeah.
Yep. So we have the CMS coaches that, remember last month, you did EHS here, CMH, spring coach list for approval? And as you're looking at that list, this gives me a good opportunity to address the transportation questions that you may have on your mind around athletics.
Where are the buses?
So as you, as you're probably fully aware, the buses are very tight for athletics. Part of that is, this week in particular, their first student has three bus drivers out for personal reasons. So it's almost a week-to-week, we're trying to do it week-to-week. Last, in the past, we have sometimes used coach buses. We will do that if we absolutely have to, however, that cost has almost doubled. So for example, to take one, a large team, the cross-country team, to someplace like Salem, they were going to charge us $5,000. I did not think that was a fiscally responsible decision, given our fund balance is also in a very different place than it was last year. Our transportation lines are very tight, and we've talked about all those reasons why. So I have asked the two athletic directors, the kind of interim, Terry Cookish, who stepped into Stefan's shoes as he moved on to a different position, and of course Kathy Clermont, they're putting together a generalized list that will go out to all parents in the co-op, just kind of explaining the process that's being used, why this is occurring. Please know that if you get questions from parents, that I didn't give permission for this. They absolutely did, on the form that you have to fill out. You can accept or deny that I allow my child to be transported with coaches or parents. They can go in and change that. If they miss that, you can go in and change that. So if you have a parent that says, "I don't want to allow that anymore," they can go back in the system and change it. So we're hopeful that between the vans, you know, we utilize those first, SAU-16 vans, and coaches, and team parents, that we will be able to get everywhere where they need to be. Obviously, if you have a student or a concern, contact the athletic director at either school, and we will do our best to ensure that your child gets a ride that you're comfortable with, for example, in the van that the coach is in, something like that. So we're working hard to accommodate any outside concerns like that, and we're doing the best we can. It's just buses are short, buses are plentiful, drivers are short. And next year, they're really going to look at the schedule, because it turns out that the middle school schedule, that group of athletic directors made a schedule, as well as NHIAA, and a lot of the games are on the same night. Remember, middle school sports also, a lot of our communities, and I'm looking at Amy because she's in Oyster River, they all transport on their own. And one of those reasons also is because middle school facilities normally don't have lights, so they can't push it much later for spring sports, like a softball or a baseball, whereas high school, we can push the games to be a little later, which sometimes allows buses to transport more easily. So it's more the middle school that struggles trying to get buses, because there's not a lot of time flexibility with the other schools that we play. So we're all doing the best we can, happy to talk with any parent that has any concerns. I've gotten honestly, like, a couple emails. I'm not sure how the athletic directors have been doing. I think they've gotten more. So they're working on just trying to get a mass message out, hopefully by, I know they're working on it this afternoon. So that's kind of the state of the state around athletic transportation today. Next week, maybe one of those drivers will be back in, and we'll be able to provide a regular bus for another sport. But track, field, and country is huge, and so those parents will be transporting, because it's huge. There's so many kids participating, which is great, but it's impossible to get the amount of buses we would need to transport all those kids. So, which is great, right? We want as many kids as we have.
Yeah, right.
But there are a lot of students interested in that, in doing that. So, any questions on that?
I have a question. What's the reason behind kids with licenses not being able to drive to the events and having to have parents drive them?
It's the liability that we were told, if it's a school sport, that we should provide signed-off transportation. I don't know the answer. If a parent signs off, my kid can transport? That's a great question that I can look into.
Okay.
And see if we can get around that, if high school drivers can drive themselves. Kids don't always make the best decisions when they're going to take themselves places. I'm guessing that might be it. But it may be if you're, if you want to just transport yourself alone in your car and you can't take passengers, that may be an option. So I can certainly check into it. I can see how taking other student passengers might be an issue.
I can also see if you're traveling to a game, and then it's going to be late and you're tired afterwards, that could be an issue. I think, well, my 17-year-old, and their capacity at 4:00 in the afternoon versus 9:00 at night is significant if they're going to Salem or something. They don't know where they're going, and they're going to be tired after a game. I kind of get that, even though I'm speaking as someone who's driving to Salem tomorrow with a discus throw. And believe me, I'd rather that, figure something else out. But these are, and I hate this phrase, the whole first-world problems phrase, but that's a little bit of what we're dancing with on this.
So I appreciate everyone's patience.
One question. As we're looking to next year, after the spring and new budgets, is there any solution that resources could provide, like maybe more vans or something like that, as opposed to, as surge capacity, if you will, as opposed to bus contracts?
You can certainly look at it, but we don't have a fund balance that would support that this year, like we did last year.
No, no, right. Looking into next year, as we cycle through, like that longer range, is that
It could be something this board could talk about developing and putting in next year's budget for the following year.
It'll be two years. Yeah. So we, while I say this board's been very supportive of that initiative, because we've had fund balances, and we do not really spend out of the fund balance, and the only thing that we really have done over the last two years is purchased vans to reduce and increase capacity around the transportation. And I just have to say that the enrollment in our athletic programs is
It's booming.
It's booming.
Which is great.
Which is great, but then it leaves us with this. But I'm so proud of the students for getting involved.
I was told by someone with knowledge that our fall athletic program is actually the largest in the state of New Hampshire.
I think it was, I might have this wrong, but I remember it was close to 800 students at the high school participating, which is great. So if you don't have any questions on the CMS
I have one question. I don't know if Drew, I don't know if Drew can answer it, or maybe, maybe not. Is there a reason for the two coaches at the grade seven baseball level and the one at grade eight? Because I thought we'd always just had one, I know, see, there's two for softball, seven and eight, but there's, I think there's, there's usually two teams.
I'd have to look into that to know that.
Okay.
Oftentimes, it's a personal choice, that the person doesn't want to coach alone, so they split the stipend.
Okay.
I'm guessing that may be what happened, but I, Drew will double-check, but that's sometimes what happens.
Just curious. It's good to have two coaches there, it's a lot of kids.
I would definitely want a partner. So I would look for an approval of the nomination list for CMS coaches.
I'll make that motion, to approve the coaches.
All right. All those in favor, place your hand. I think we've got everyone approving.
If you don't mind passing those back, that would be great. I'm not going to go into great depth on the legislative update, because we are going to cover that at the joint board meeting on Monday. I just want to acknowledge Brian's work on, well, Brian, why don't you just give a little brief explanation on the work you've done?
I've done very little.
Not true.
Did prepare an article for the Brentwood Town Newsletter, took a focus on what's happening legislatively. At the time I drafted the article initially, the House bill to the state budget bill passed by the House had not yet been voted on, so that still had language for the budget cap for districts that was in there, as well as the open enrollment provision and a separate bill that doesn't directly affect schools, but SB 297, which could increase costs for health trust in reaction to what health trust is threatening to dissolve. And apparently, the other affected entity, New Hampshire Inter-local Trust, has already indicated it's going to dissolve. Anyway, you had a cap, and then two provisions which could increase expenditures for schools going forward. Pulled out the bit about the district cap, because that was not in the final past budget. But anyway, there are two provisions in the current version of the budget being debated in the Senate that could increase expenses for local school districts, and those are things that local school districts don't really have control over, aren't able to vote on. So just make people aware of that, so that they know, gosh, this is, things are getting more expensive. It's a lot of, a lot of actions in Concord affect how expensive local education is.
Thanks. It goes back to when we, during budget season, I felt like I was a broken record saying, "I agree with you, our tax rates are too high. You've got to get involved in Concord." The costs here are, as we see, 93, 94, 95% fixed in our budgets. It's the adequacy money, it's things like that. The open enrollment and the risk pool funds, and I'm looking at Amy because she's BA and has a good handle on the potential impacts of that, it's hard to kind of project out other than it will have a definite impact on us. Meaning that if they currently go with, that the sending district has to pay 80% of the cost per student if a student chooses to go elsewhere, and the receiving district has to make up the extra 20%. Either way we go, that would be something we would have to think about cost-wise. We also, the transportation in there right now is transportation to a bus stop. It's not to the school. So in other words, if we had six kids that are carpooling out of Kingston into Brentwood, and the Brentwood stop now is full, that bus is full, because we did our routes based on who lives in district and houses that live in district, we have to provide that transportation. That's an example of, I'm not sure how to predict that, because the ebb and flow is not defined as of yet. Then we get into special ed costs, and you're all familiar with how we, that's unpredictable at times already. I do have a prediction that because, as you just saw, if anyone watched that presentation about the cooperative middle school, and you live in a smaller town with less resources, that might seem very appealing. As a parent, if I'm a division, if I think I have a really strong athlete, extra high school's a Division 1 school with amazing facilities, we have an unequal amount of advanced placement courses. We have, there's a lot of potential for SAU-16 to be a draw, I believe. And at the flip of that, we're also big, so some people might want to go to a smaller school. How that all works and the control we'll have, right now, it looks like we don't have any say over whether we take them or not. If they want to come, they come. And so it's going to be a very tough budget season, and I just want folks to kind of be thinking about that and how we will work hard as superintendents and BAs and how to come up with formulas to predict what that might look like. But those two things alone, if we have to also do a risk pool that isn't held by our health trust or our insurance companies any longer, and we have to hold that percentage in a little rainy day fund to make it, I'm looking at Amy if I'm using the right words.
They're saying for us to create an expendable trust fund for 4% of your health insurance premiums. The problem for us as school districts is the only way you can create a trust fund is by the governing body, so when the public votes to create the trust fund, but they're also the only ones that can put money into it. And this law is not clear as to how that's going to be handled. So we're stuck with, what's going to happen if it passes, if this SB 297 passes, but we don't have the ability to put that money in? Does that mean that comes out of our operating budgets? Because then we would have to pay that, those premiums, that shortfall to the risk pool.
Translation, every budget's frozen. I mean, honestly. And so there is a lot happening at a very fast pace, literally daily, I feel like. And then, of course, the other piece that's been in the news quite a bit is the required certification form that superintendents have been asked to sign by the state of New Hampshire by Thursday the 17th, this Thursday at 5:00 PM. We know, we're all kind of waiting to see how that court case with the ACLU goes around signing that. That court case is at 10:00 AM on Thursday. Hopefully, we'll get a decision and some direction. I know there may have been some interest about signing on to that lawsuit with the ACLU. That is not an option for SAU-16, because they, ACLU filed an additional amendment to that injunction that they're going to be heard on on Thursday, and they're not accepting any more districts. So they had to file that additional injunction with the districts that were listed by, I think, yesterday, in order to that, for that to be part of what they heard on on Thursday. So that part's off the table. However, we'll still, I've still invited, as I put out, our legal counsel, the board's legal counsel, Mike Eaton, to come and answer questions around all of these things. So as a joint board, you can have a good, robust conversation and see if there, we will have a letter of support ready around from SAU-16, kind of for you all to preview, if that's something you want to consider as a board. We certainly are going to be trying to send something out to all of our parents. We're looking at it at SLT tomorrow. Arlen Paletta did a great job for NHPR, New Hampshire Public Radio. They pushed an article out today. We had answered their questions really in-depth, and then, of course, they just picked little pieces of it, because they were combining a lot of information. We're going to revamp that into a letter and send that out to everyone, just so that folks know that we are in compliance, we are about equity, and we are about giving kids what they need and access for every student. We're not in violation of anything while we do that. And in fact, what we're doing supports the language that is, that is coming out from the executive order and from this compliance. So we're, we're good, and our work's continuing. So we will send that message out, hopefully tomorrow or Thursday morning, and then we'll bring that to the board, just as a guiding document on Monday night. So, kind of where we stand. I know it's confusing. It's confusing for all of us, but we're hanging in, and I'm reminding people just to relax and breathe, because our work will continue, and we'll, we'll be okay on that front. I am confident of that. It's not ideal, but we can continue our equity work. We, that's a core value that came out of strategic planning, and we'll continue to do that, for sure. So giving kids what they need and access to everybody is definitely a priority in SAU 16 and will continue to be. And then budgeting. We'll work through that the best we can.
Let me ask a question, Brian. When is the -- the House -- the budget is in the Senate right now. What's the anticipated timeline for that to get through? Do they have a deadline that says, hey, we've got to have this?
It goes to finance until -- it goes to the governor normally in June. I mean, the new budget has to be, allegedly, has to be something for July 1, right? And so in May, in April and May, this is when they kind of fight about it and amend it and go forward, and then in June, it goes forward to the governor for approval, et cetera, et cetera.
Then the Senate can amend it and then send it back to the House. It could be committee of conference, and they can see where they disagree and come to an agreement. So but yeah, generally, mid-June is when you're seeing it resolved.
So there's still time now to get educated and say something and?
Yep, and if you look at that, your New Hampshire School Boards Association that comes to you every Sunday, if you haven't subscribed, you can. You all have a membership to that, and that has what's coming up and when what is going to be heard, and you at any time can go as a citizen to Concord and, you know, voice your opinion or listen or things like that. So that's a good point of reference for you. And if you look at that and you're not sure, don't hesitate to email me, and we can try to work through if you're not clear about that. But we also are trying to keep everybody up to date as much as possible.
That school board email also has a link for you to submit testimony if you want, or even just to check a box, oppose, or support. So if you don't want to write something up, just -- and I believe they're now required, at least on most bills, to indicate we had 600 people supporting and we had four people opposing, or vice versa, whatever the numbers are. So they're required to put that on the record and make known how popular or unpopular any particular piece of legislation is.
Oh, great.
I've been doing that, and so you have to say whether you're just a private citizen or if you're an elected official. As a board member, do you have to say elected official?
When you're filling that out, you're a private citizen. It would be if the whole board decided to take a stance, and then you would be representing a board.
Gotcha, okay.
Or an elected official. And you want to be aware of that, that you're filling it out as a private citizen, unless your whole board, like I said, comes together and you all say, "We're going to fill this out and be representing our school board as board members." To my knowledge, I don't think any board has had that conversation. So I would continue to fill it out as a private citizen.
I just want to say thanks for doing all that work with the equity and, you know, the compliance issue and highlighting the importance of equity to SAU 16. It's really important. Thank you.
You're welcome. We will be, I believe, the only SAU in the state that has an equity officer left. Get ready. All right.
Are you staying on? Chairs report.
Wait, I have a couple other things.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I do.
There's more.
Long-winded. I do have a donation, and our policy does require that -- there's one in here that's upping the limit, but right now it's $500 or more. We do have an organization that would like to donate funds to purchase new microphones for Exeter High School, specifically designed for the choir. Four new microphones, four sturdy mic stands, and four quick connect clips for speedy setup, not to exceed $3,000. So I just need an approval to accept that funding for this purpose, per our policy, from the board.
And we can do that because it's over 500.
I have to bring it to the board because it's over 500.
Okay, okay.
That's interesting. I'll make a motion.
Second? Excellent. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Excellent, we have full approval. Great, thank you for that.
Thank you, and I do have, as you know, the deadline for contracts going out was today. I'm not sure our human resource officer has slept at all for the past two weeks. I tried to send her home, but I ventured to say she might still be at the office now. But so I do have three letters of resignation. One from Nicole Vernon, one from Allison Christians, and one from Pauline Cheeseman. And I have their letters here in the packet. So Pauline wants to be done at the end of this year. She says that she's established this successful AP mechanics program and revitalized a robotics program. She's proud of the contribution she's made here, but the time has come for her to focus on more on her family. She's grateful for the opportunity to have been part of the Exeter High School community. That's Pauline. Allison, this marks her 10th year of teaching, and she's incredibly grateful that her teaching career has been at Exeter High School. She's grown as a professional. She has -- I'm just looking if she put -- she just put -- she's just looking forward to finishing this year with appreciation. Thank you for 10 years of opportunity, growth, and community. And then this was a letter from Nicole Vernon, who you may recall has not been here this year, and so she's decided to, after 15 years of service, to close that chapter and do some other things. So I would ask you to accept all three of those resignations.
I'll make the motion to accept all three nominations.
Resignation.
Resignation, sorry. Resignations. You second it? Excellent. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
And then just FYI, I have a couple issues for non-public when the time comes. That's it for my report. Unless you have any other questions.
Thank you. So a quick chairs report. I did send out the committee assignments, mainly for you guys to -- for everyone to look at. I have gotten a couple responses. I think that's really helpful. Does anybody -- we could do this tonight if people want to put their names in to certain places. We're ahead of the game, so this is good. So let's go down to -- there probably won't be a strategic planning committee next year? That's?
I actually think there would still be a steering committee, just to make sure that it may not go all year, but just to make sure that gets up and running and the key performance indicators are solid, and I feel like we just want a rep. I'd rather have a rep and then say, oh, everybody feels good than not have a rep.
Does anybody have any desire to do that? All right, so let's -- I'm just going to -- we'll come back to that one. The policy committee is Melissa and Tammy. Is that still good? Or Tim, do you want to -- Brian, do you want on, or is there any?
I'm on it for the Brentwood Board, and I ideally would kill two birds with one stone, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes for anybody else realizing I'm new on this board, so I will gladly.
Yeah, so Tammy, if you --
And we only need one rep from this board, too. We don't have one, too.
So I could do the SST?
Yeah, I know you wanted to do the SST. We had one other person wanting to do SST. So could we have two people for the SST governing board?
You can do anything you want.
Like, anything?
Anything. As long as it's legal.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay, then Tammy, you're up.
Is that for SST?
SST.
Oh, you're going to get -- can you give me a copy of that?
Yeah.
All right. I won't try to write down.
Anything you want.
Anything?
No. Great. Safety and security? We have two people on that.
I would stay on that.
You'll stay on that? You both stay on it? All right, great. We feel secure under your leadership on that committee, so thank you. SAU superintendent evaluator, I'm happy to stay on that committee, if that's all right, just for continuity. We'll talk more about that, but I know that we'll have another superintendent next year. And the SAU joint boards chairs, I'll stay on that one. That was a heavy lift this year.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I know, that we didn't have to use that. We will have a pair contract, so I know that we had one volunteer already for that, and I'd love to have Dawn on that committee. Dawn, you're good there.
Are you doing it? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I know, I was hoping you were going to say that. The sabbatical leave committee. Erin, you're on it right now.
I would stay on that.
You'd stay on that? Okay. We could put somebody else on if somebody really wants to.
I'm good.
All right, you guys are okay.
Smart, he's been on a board before.
Silence. The BAC.
What is?
So that is the Budget Advisory Committee. That meets in October for five to six weeks.
Four to five weeks.
Yeah, four to five weeks, every Thursday night. And that is when the principals, the business of the building administrators come and present their budget to the --
Yeah, so the budget's divided into sections, so there'll be a presentation on SST, and then the high school, and then the tech.
You can sign me up.
Yeah, yeah, okay, Neil, that'd be great, yeah.
That'll be good, because you can ask all your questions at BAC and then come real well-informed.
Yeah, yeah, it is, they go deep, so you'll love it, yes.
We don't do it at this level, the same way you did at elementary level.
Yeah. Anybody want to be an alternative for that? I mean, I'd love for you to be, but I know how -- it's kind of like --
What about my other life?
Your other life.
What about Joey's quiet over there?
Alternative for that?
Fifteen years of budgeting and select boards.
I know.
You can list me as the alternative. Just take care of yourself.
It's really a pinch.
No riding with kids, the sporting event.
Great, if you two ever need my help, I've been on that committee many times, I'm happy to jump in. Good, does everybody feel comfortable? Everybody have a roll?
Stepping on policy.
Oh, really, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Brian's got it, and it's running much smoother now than it did seven, eight years ago.
It is, I know. It really is.
We revamp that.
I'm happy to step in if you need to miss a meeting, let me know.
What is on? It's on soccer night, so.
I know, this is really tough for me. I was trying to keep you off of it, Brian, but.
No, but I --
I can say that SAU would be gravely disappointed if Brian doesn't stay on because he does such a great job with all the grammar.
Yes.
And really, really.
But you do a good job at soccer, too, so we're having a difficult --
No, I can do both.
Don't let your bias step into this, okay?
A big comment's in advance.
Okay, all right.
I did last month because I had a work obligation.
No, Brian is very talented at being at the policy committee, so he's really good at that, so. But that would leave one. I mean, that makes it difficult because you're serving for Brentwood also and for this board.
He gets two votes.
But it's not like we don't vote at policy.
I know, I know.
It's just that it operates by consensus. It's --
Everyone just tells what Brian is.
No, I know, yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Brian, appreciate it. I will write this up and resend it to everybody, just check it and make sure you're good with it.
Can you be sure and send it to me? To him, please.
I will definitely send it. I'll use that fancy little SAU.
Okay.
All right. So if I ever write an email out like that, just if you have questions, respond to me directly, not to the whole group. We've talked about that before, just because it's -- that would constitute a meeting, and so we will save ourselves from that hassle. Right, but we can always meet more if we need to. Board goals, I just want to point out that in our meeting here on the agenda, we do have our board goals that we did for 20 -- for this year. We will, in our first meeting of the fall, do our board goals. I think it'd be more appropriate doing it then, just Chris will be here and we'll have a focus on. Was it -- I was trying to be subtle. No, I think that'll be -- and then I think we'll certainly have a lot more information in legislature, what's happening with the budgets. I think that might steer some of our work.
Strategic plan.
Yeah, and I --
That's smart.
You know, one thing I would like to say, I mean, we have these committee assignments. This doesn't -- I mean, these committees all work. We revamped them significantly a year ago, didn't we?
Yes.
Dawn, you'd love that.
Sorry, yeah, it was a little bit painful.
Yes.
I mean, it was great, but it was a lot.
Well, we had a lot, a lot of committees. It was a -- so we've really narrowed them down. But if there's something new, new committee that we have to put on there, I think about legislature, like having someone follow what's going on at the State House and education around that, that might be something that, what? No, no, no. But we should think about that and how that's affecting our school system and --
I anticipate, too, with that, if you remember that restructure that Chris presented with transportation facilities and policy, things under one person, that person will be the person that'll also be looking at legislature as it impacts policy, and I think you'll get a pretty good -- a different kind of report on that because it will be one person, and that's what they're focused on, one of the things they're focused on, just because it's so -- seems to be so busy.
Is that at the SAU office? Okay, all right.
There's also a fairly small window in which you can affect legislative issues. It's really like January to April, and if you're meeting every month and you're missing things, and it's -- so it probably requires, I think, someone in the SAU rather than a board committee.
Well, I was thinking, yeah, I'm thinking more like if that person is there and they're updating the committee, and then the committee would update each board. It's more educational, but I --
I think it will be the responsibility of the SAU.
Okay.
If that's what the board wants, if you want a monthly update, which is what we've tried to do by putting it on the agenda most recently because it got real busy at that time, because I know Chris continues -- will be continued to be on the executive board of NHSAA, which we have a legislative committee, which I'm on. I anticipate he will move over to the legislative committee. So we meet every week, and I get updates, and so that's helpful.
Okay, so we can stay. All right. Very good. So we talked -- I talked about adding committees and Dawn walked out, so. I know. She does not want any more committees. I will leave it at that. Molly, will you save me?
So in your board pack is a current year financial. You're going to see there's a lot of supplies because this is that time of year I tell everyone they need to buy it. If they don't have it before April vacation, they don't need it. So that's the big change there. We did have -- we added the retirement encumbrances as we get close to the end of the year. We know what the number six days that the people have are. And then we had some changes in transportation regarding changes in student needs, specifically regarding special education, and we continue to run less buses. So did anyone have any questions? Okay. Then the second thing, I think it might be a little bit mislabeled, saying meal debt. Every year, or the past few years, this board has voted to cover the reduced price. So it's not really debt, it's covering the reduced price for the kids that qualify for reduced meals. So working with Jean Pierce, it's -- she estimates it at about $3,000 for the year for the cooperative. So if we want to do that for the next year, meaning next school year, we'd be looking for this board to make a motion to do so.
So this is something that I'm pretty passionate about, I mean, that this is -- covers the meals for the kids, then?
Correct. So anyone that qualifies for free is free.
Yeah.
Anyone that just has a regular meal service would follow the regular program, but anyone that falls in that middle bucket of reduced, this district would cover that reduced fee.
So it covers the gap between what's the reduced amount and the price of the big -- of the complete lunch, regular price, right?
Correct, yeah. And this is done at Exeter Elementary, so as well.
And I think the other point, too, I think this really saves a lot of administrative work of trying to collect that money. Is that correct?
Well, I do think, yeah, it's hard to tell if those people would pay or not, but people that fall in that category, this greatly helps them.
Yeah, and we're not trying to chase parking passes and making phone calls and --
Correct.
So I think it's a -- it saves operational costs for us, but it also supports.
Yeah, it supports those families that really, truly need it.
So I'll make the motion to use the funds to --
Cover the gap between the --
Cover the gap between.
The reduced lunch and the full price.
So I'll make the motion to cover the gap between reduced and regular. A second, excellent. All those in favor? Please raise your hand.
Molly, one quick question.
Sure.
Of the total of the free and reduced, what percentage, if that's 100%, what percentage is reduced lunch?
I don't know at this point. I mean, the number of kids that qualify for it?
Yeah, of the whole bucket of free and reduced. Like, our free and reduced numbers in the elementary school used to be between 15% to 20% of the student population. Of that number, how much is free as opposed to -- is it evenly split?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to check with.
Thank you.
Yep, ask Jean.
Thank you. That's where I forget.
Good, excellent. So unfunded, unfunded, I know, unassigned fund balance, we're at 1.3 right now. We're not going to touch any of that, given what's going on.
Well, that's the total, but our unassigned fund balance really is -- this is what was voted on to expand. Is, this is, this is what was voted on to expand. That's with revenue, so we could only expend this.
Yes.
That would be used to offset taxes still, but that's why we're not spending any money that's absolutely necessary, because that's a very low number for us.
It's a very low number, yes. The percentage is really, really low. Years ago, we used to have a much higher percentage.
Yeah. In the guideline, we gauge all schools with the, all purchase orders need to be incomplete and approved before April vacation. So with the co-op, knowing that this is super tight, I actually had them do it a little while ago. So there probably is a little bit more coming in this week, but that's why you see so many supplies on you.
Okay.
This will be helpful next year during budget season, when people perhaps look at, they want to cut a total amount, because there's a fund balance. So I know this year we worked really hard to explain the difference between the fund balance that included revenue that we can't expend, and our actual, what was appropriated and what we can expend. So that's a very, that's super good budgeting technically.
That is, yeah, that is within one, less than 1%.
Way less. Yeah, way less.
Way less.
But don't forget, in that bottom right-hand corner, I have those three stars, that we are closing out the CMS bond, so that's why your unassigned fund balance will look significantly larger.
So we just have to make sure that next year during budget season, people really understand why that number looks so big. It wasn't operating, it wasn't budget that they raised and got taxed on. It was revenue and closing out this bond.
Mm-hmm.
Make a note, Molly. Next year, make a note.
Molly, you will lead us to that next year. I know you will.
I can't wait. And Neil will be right there.
It is looking hopeful that we will not, at this point, have to go to ask for, from the Special Trust Fund to cover those costs, which is why our budget, you know, a primary reason why our budget has that number. So we're trying really hard not to have to touch that.
Yeah, we're trying really hard not to touch it. And if we did get closer, if we have a lot of changes in student need, I would ask the board to make a motion up, too, so that way when we finalize the DOE report, that we're only taking the, as much as we need, not an exact number.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Committee reports ahead. Do you want to update on the strategic plan?
Yep, quickly, we meet Thursday, and we'll, we've got our core values, and we've got our priority areas, and we'll talk about key performance indicators. And I'm hopeful that for Joint Board in May, we'll have at least one page to present, and then that's why I think the committee will continue to exist, because they still have to flesh out some things.
Great, thank you. Superintendent Evaluation, you got an email about this the other day.
Yeah.
So we appreciate that. Thank you. And we are, we've met as a group a couple times. We've got one more meeting on Friday. Just note that we'll speak more about this at the board meeting on Monday night, but we'll be asked to, I'll ask all of you for comments back, so we can put together some feedback. Safety and security.
Safety and security. We met, we heard from a group of students that have formed a, they call, they're called the Hope Squad, sort of like a peer counseling, peer, peer referral system for students that might need support through personal issues. Those students were incredibly impressive. Oh, we heard them here.
Well, I was gonna say.
Yep, I'm sorry. I saw that twice in like three days. So, we heard from them, same kids. Actually, a couple more. There may be five at the meeting. There wasn't a lot, there wasn't a lot that happened at that meeting. I'm looking.
Nope, just an update on all the table, I was gonna say table talks. I'm thinking of the pie.
Yeah, the table talks is from Rich.
We're hungry.
Good lord. Rich has done a nice job. Rich came out of expanding those, not just to intruders, but like a kid taken off the playground, et cetera, et cetera. So that's been helpful, and all the schools mandatory now have to do at least two a year. So he's work, he's doing his, working his way through that. We talked about the grant money.
Yep.
And all the cameras, additional cameras, additional grant money we got. We're ready to go if they offer another round. Not looking hopeful, but if they do, we're ready to go. And we just kind of went over that our physical, the physical aspects of our building are in great shape, and that's why the MTSSB that you heard about tonight is beginning to play a major role around safety and security, because that's our other, kind of our other space, we really have to pay attention to, is how do we keep kids safe when they're just regulated, when life is not serving them in the way they hoped, and they react? So, as well as adults. So that's really where we're putting a lot of our efforts, obviously, because our, our hardscape pieces are, it's pretty solid right now, in that. So we'll continue to do that through our Behavior Interventions Team. We talked about BIT, and the role that BIT, that's a threat assessment team that I've talked about before. So those things are continuing and expanding, and, you know, we have, the world right now was, can be pretty volatile, and so can kids. So we're trying to keep a handle on that.
Esther, are we, I don't know what the result of the conversation with the door locks for swinging door or for moving indoors. Are we ordering those?
Only if they want to build it into their budget. So each board will talk about that. So we did have a, a lock system that we demoed.
Like a bracket?
Doesn't matter whether the door opens out or in. So instead of having to replace all your doors, because if you barricade the door and it opens out, the barricade's not really doing you any good, right? So this locks the door in and out, and then there's a tool that first responders could have that could get that open. So folks looked at that. It's not super, super expensive, but you would have to count the doors in your building and do that process. But it seemed like Rich thought, one of the best tools he's seen that actually would address our outward opening doors. So, though, when you get to budget season and talking about safety and security, that would be what you'd want to think about.
Great. Thank you for the update. Policy Committee.
My last one.
I, yeah, I mean, I don't know what to do now. Where do I go?
Let's let Brian take it.
He's new, so I don't, you can do this.
He's been there.
I know.
Well, I wasn't there last month.
But you gave all your input.
But I gave, yeah, apparently Olivia shared my input.
Was there?
I just cheat and say, Olivia does a great job, and Heather before her did a great job with these summaries that you find in the board packets. And you can see they're marked, you know, was it a new policy? Is that checked? Or is it a review of a current or existing policy? Nine times out of 10, these policies are updated in reaction to changes in the law. So there's really not a, a, a great deal that goes beyond what's required in the law, and the discussion at Policy Committee often revolves around how does this tie back to the law that's supporting it, and are we citing it properly? And then, you know, changes to make sure we're being appropriate for superintendent or designee, or, you know, capturing gender appropriately for his, hers, their, et cetera. So it's, you know, the, all of these were recommended by the Policy Committee. So I'm sorry if I repeated things that you've already said or done something.
Nope, nope.
Alright.
No, and I don't remember how long you've been on the committee, but when we, when I was first on the committee, we didn't find out the policies we were going to talk about until we got to the meeting that night.
Yeah.
And then we would all be kind of like trying to look up the, and we didn't get any sort of information about what the legislative changes were, and so, yeah, now it's just a smooth running. I'm the only one that still shows up at the meetings, and you don't have to, so, yeah, happy to take it off my plate.
Yeah, and these, when I first started, these weren't part of it, these summaries. I think Heather started doing this. These are amazing.
Starting from scratch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know, we were promised doing fewer policies at each meeting, and she hasn't really kept to that. So somewhat disappointing, and I think a little bit more disappointing for the other board members, at least that I report back out to. But we get a heads-up of what we're going to do the next month and so forth. But there were no, no concerns of the Policy Committee that weren't addressed in what's before you tonight.
Yeah, no, that's, I so appreciate the summaries and all the work that the Policy Committee's done over the last couple of years, just get everything updated. So I'm sure it'll slow down to few policies.
No.
No.
The slouches.
No, it will not. So I appreciate you doing this.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the nine policies and to withdraw the one policy.
I'll second that. Before we move on to voting, any, any discussion about the policies? Excellent. I'll do a roll call for this. Brian, you want to start?
Aye.
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 Yes. Thank you. Any new business or old business? Anybody wants to bring it up?
I have a question, Esther. Now that we've moved on, we had new superintendent, new principal at the high school, is there any other updates on any of the other kind of big positions that are out there?
That is one of the things I'll talk about non-public.
Alright. Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, and?
Are seeing none, I'm going to ask that, we're going to go into non-public, called under RSA 91A32AI, or no, it's A, sorry, A. So I'll ask for a motion to go non-public. Excellent. I'll second that, Joe.
Yeah.
So we'll do, Brian approved, second, made, Brian made the motion, Joe seconded. So I'll do a roll call. Brian?
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you for non-public. Thank you for a non-public.